Who do we have?
It's Matt. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Good morning, Jason. Anybody else on the line? Okay. At this time, we ask everybody to please rise for their opening prayer and your pledge of allegiance. Dear gracious and loving God, we open our eyes this morning to see the beauty and new life in our spring season, a new cycle of life that brings hope and joy to our hearts as we witness your creation. Lord, we are witnessing hate and destruction that brings evil to our communities all too often. And this morning, we pray for the victims in Buffalo, Milwaukee, and California with these horrific and senseless shootings. We pray for your comfort and peace for the families and friends of these evil acts. May your love change the hearts of those that possess these forms of hatred. It is not your intent for man to consume, be consumed with such evil, but to share in your love. May we all realize that we are created equal in your eyes, and your love has no boundaries. Far this week, we recognize and honor members of our medical services. These members of the medical field include our first responders, paramedics, technicians, dispatchers, firefighters, police, doctors, and nurses. These are the ones on the front lines every day protecting, treating, and caring for our communities. They are the ones that run to an emergency at a moment's notice to assist their fellow man. They dedicate their lives to serving others. We thank you for giving them strength through some difficult years. May your hand be over them for continued safety. Lord, as we begin the agenda today set before us, grant us the assurance and wisdom of our decisions, that they're in your will, and they'll be beneficial to those who work and reside in our county. We ask you these things in your name and give you the praise. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to your right, United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on a nation, on a land, indivisible, with the unity of the justus of our world.
Good morning, everyone. At this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting, and we'll ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
All favors say aye. Aye, so carried. At this time, we'll have public comments on the agenda items only. Scraps.
Quick comment for the emergency medical services and everyone that works in our public services. Remind us the Bible does teach us, you're ministers of God, not just our elected officials. And I really wanted to tell them so they can hear that. We really appreciate you all, and we all do pray for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to one point six, Proclamations, Emergency Medical Services Week.
EMS Week Proclamation, May 15th through the 21st. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill the gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifestyle skills or lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers by designated Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lecomming County in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS strong theme, EMS Week, rising to the challenge, we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed by the Lecomming County Commissioner, Scott Metzger, Chairman, Tony Messer, Vice Chairman, and Rick Maravito, Secretary.
Proclamation, Emergency Medical Services for Children Day. Whereas more than 30 million children receive emergency medical care each year due to illness or injury, and whereas the needs of children are different than the needs of adults in a medical emergencies. Whereas the goal of a medical emergency services for children is to help states and communities prepare for an emergency involving a child through the provision of pediatric-ready emergency departments and emergency medical service agencies. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services for Children program supports research and improvement science to drive transformation of emergency care systems. And whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children relies on its established partnership within the emergency medical services community, as well as multidisciplinary teams of healthcare providers across the emergency care continuum to help states and communities reduce child and youth disability and death due to severe illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children, the tens of thousands of prehospital and hospital-based practitioners and families it serves, and the professional organizations and federal agencies in which it partners, are committed to ensure the delivery of high-quality emergency care for children. And whereas it's proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services for Children, and the dedicated personnel who work tirelessly to improve the delivery of pediatric care across emergency care systems. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lecomming County in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the date of May 18th, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services for Children, EMSC Day, as part of National EMS Week in Lecomming County. And we urge all citizens and healthcare professionals serving the pediatric population to celebrate the EMS strong theme, EMS Week, rising to the challenge, to become familiar with EMSC, its programs and activities in our state and nationally, and to support and participate in educational and outreach programs to increase their knowledge of best pediatric medical care practices. Lecomming County Commissioners sign, Scott Metzger, Chairman, Tony Armistere, Vice Chairman, and Richard Maravito, Secretary.
Okay. We have somebody from the EMS community that would like to speak. Wendy?
I just have a couple of words when we're going to give our awards, so.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to. How many people in this audience today has ever been picked up by an ambulance? Right? And, you know, I remember I was having a heart attack. I didn't know it. But as soon as I made that call to 911, I thought, man, this could be serious stuff here. But as soon as those trained, skilled people that came to my house came, it kind of subsided. And that's the faith that we have in the people that provide those services, our first responders. Okay? A tremendous amount of faith. And, you know, we also have to have 911 operators. If we didn't have them, the message wouldn't go out. And right now is a critical time in our history where volunteers and paid staff work together. But those volunteers anymore, you know, EMTs, paramedics, they need a lot of training, mandated training, that costs them money and not to be paid for it. So we are at a crisis, and we need young people to step up and dedicate their lives to this profession. And for all of you that are out there, I take my hat off to you. You are so needed, and we can, this is just a small token of our appreciation to give you a proclamation for the work that you do for our community.
You rush, when most people are running, you rush to the scenes. You see horrific things. And it takes a special person to do what you're doing, and you're our heroes in our communities. Anyone that needs an ambulance or needs services that experiences that, I owe you a big thank you. I have the kid with Hutch that I was never so glad to see him in 2015 when I fell out of a tree and broke my back, broke my foot, broke my finger. And I hit the ground so hard, my neighbors had their windows open, they heard a thud. And they came to run into me. And Hutch was the first one on the scene. And when you're laying there, and you're coherent, and you hear those sirens coming, you think you're never going to get there, then you realize that they got there within a matter of minutes. And you drop everything to run to your fellow man. And that's true love. It takes a special person to do what you're doing, and we cannot thank you enough. So this is a small thing that we can do. This is one of the favorite things I enjoy doing, is honoring people that deserve to be honored, and each one of you deserves to be honored. Thank you.
You know, we, as Commissioner Messer mentioned, we face a real crisis because we have people aging out, right? Through the natural process of people getting older, our population in the county is getting older. We have younger people leaving the county. So we're trying to do what we can to encourage people. We've established a scholarship program that the Commissioners fund for, through the fire departments, fire chiefs, if they have folks who want to become EMTs and they need funding. We also, you saw a couple of months ago, we helped fund that Northern Alliance. We're doing our part to try to bolster the emergency services in the county. If there are suggestions that you have as citizens, you should bring them to us. We can't promise that we can do everything, but we certainly will try to do what we can. I, before I became a Commissioner, I never realized that we had a EMS for Children training and a specialty. It makes sense, but of course, most of us as public citizens don't necessarily know what goes on behind the scenes when they're saving our lives. This is critical in terms of getting people trained, and we appreciate the fact that so many of the EMS folks have gone on to get that special training so that when they find a five-year-old or a four-year-old or even a younger child, you're saving our children, and we appreciate that very much, all that you do. So thank you on this day.
Okay. We'd like to go into the awards next, ma'am.
Yeah. Two point one, we're going to award some service awards, and Wendy, these things will acknowledge the following, Lecomming County Emergency Medical Service Award recipients. Do you want me to read the main training?
No, that was kind of a secret.
Well, then. It's only been, it happened to be a secret.
Well, Commissioners, I want to thank you so much for your acknowledgement and your support of our local EMS system and allowing us to present these awards here today to some very deserving recipients. So our EMT of the Year has been an active volunteer in Lecomming County, originally obtaining her EMT certification in 1991, serving with both Jersey Shore Area EMS, Susquehanna EMS, and currently with DuBois Town. As a volunteer, she's a top responder for her department, if not in the county, and is responsible for much of the administrative paperwork related to quality assurance, ambulance licensure, and continuing education. Without her dedication, through the pandemic, the strain of Williamsport and surrounding communities would have been greater without her always being there to assist with staffing, and delays in getting an ambulance to a patient in need would have been much greater. It was no secret that our hospitals and emergency departments were overwhelmed, and if it were not for her taking transfers to other facilities or coordinating her fellow EMTs, the strain on the hospitals would have been worse. Regardless of whether it's early mornings, late nights, weekends, or holidays, our EMT of the Year is always there and ready to help. Congratulations to Jody McKibben, our Lecomming County EMT of the Year.
Our Paramedic of the Year has served his community as both a volunteer with the Hepburn Township and Old Lecomming Township Fire Departments, and as a career paramedic with the Susquehanna Regional EMS, delivering exceptional patient care for over 20 years. In addition to his skillful and compassionate care, since the COVID-19 pandemic, he has been instrumental in creating a unique environment to deliver and validate high-quality and interactive continuing education, initially for staff and now quarterly for any provider across the Commonwealth, often attracting over 100 participants. This year's Lecomming County Paramedic of the Year is Scott Tempesco.
Thank you.
So I knew there was something suspicious when I saw her. I see her hair from the time. And she said that she's supposed to be to work at 10 o'clock.
She's going to be a little late.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So it was a surprise?
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Our 911 telecommunications are often our unsung heroes, but one of the most vital links in the chain of survival, providing life support and lifesaving instructions that can often be the difference between life and death prior to arrival of EMS. This year's Telecommunicator of the Year is being recognized specifically for his actions in January of this year when he received a 911 call from a 26-week pregnant female in labor residing in rural Sullivan County and during a vicious snowstorm. Our telecommunicator exhibited great patience, remained calm throughout this emotionally charged situation, and provided clear and precise instructions that assisted in the successful birth of not one, but two premature baby girls, the second of which was breach. One of these babies was also born with an intact amniotic sac, and utilizing his emergency medical dispatch training, he was able to provide instruction to the mother on how to break the sac and how to clear the baby's airway to ensure that she was breathing. These two babies are alive today due to the actions of Clinton Frackman, our Telecommunicator of the Year. Unfortunately, Clinton was not able to be here this morning, but accepting on his behalf is Jeff Hutchins, Director of Public Safety.
And we'll make sure we get a picture and present this to Clint in the 911 center, so we'll send a picture over to the Commissioners. But thank you on behalf of Clint. Unfortunately, with the 911 staffing, he was working back-to-back 12 hours, and it was just too much to get in here. He works night shifts, so he's sleeping right now. He also did receive the State Telecommunicator of the Year Award through Pennsylvania APCO, so he is aware, but thank you very much.
Our EMS Educator of the Year is presented to a lead instructor for Penn College for the past several years with a high success rate. He has received great praise for his effectiveness as an instructor and mentor for new EMTs. He teaches multiple other courses in addition to the EMT program to include ACLS, PALS, CPR, PHTLS, PERS, and most recently, the Back to Basics course offered by the Susquehanna Regional EMS. His encouraging demeanor, patience, and extensive field experience make him an ideal educator and mentor. Congratulations to Tim Weaver, our EMS Educator of the Year. it marks not only the 30th year as his medical directorship of the Susquehanna Regional EMS and the 18th year that our emergency physician has served as our regional medical director for Lecomming, Tioga, and Sullivan Counties, but it also marks his retirement. It's been a profound honor to work with Dr. Greg Fraley and witness firsthand his skill, knowledge, compassion, and leadership that's guided the exceptional care of our prehospital providers and has earned him much recognition through the Commonwealth and nation as he's been the recipient of two prestigious national awards. He has earned the respect of his colleagues, professional organizations for which he has served in leadership roles, and the prehospital providers he has mentored. Dr. Fraley couldn't be here this morning, and in lieu of a plaque, we will be making a donation in Dr. Fraley's name to the EMS cause of his choosing. And I'd just like to introduce you to Dr. Jeff Myers, who's here today, who will be following in Dr. Fraley's footsteps, and we welcome you as our new Regional Medical Director.
Thanks, Wendy.
You know, Wendy, I just want to comment, having attended, having attended some of the meetings, Dr. Fraley has always been an incredible support.
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Say that. Dr. Fraley has always been an incredible support and educator and mentor, and just as someone who's not in the EMS service, so I think we will sorely miss him. Absolutely. Just please convey to him from the Commissioners that we appreciate all that he's done for the county for the last 30 years.
We certainly will.
Yeah.
Providing EMS in rural and remote areas of Lecomming County can be challenging and often takes our volunteers away from their homes and families for hours when called out at any time of day or night. And I wanted to take a moment today to recognize three EMTs with the Plunkets Creek Volunteer Fire Company. These three gentlemen have over 128 years of combined continuous service to our community. Bruce Skinner has served as the ambulance captain for more than 20 of those years and 49 years of service. Ray Murphy, an EMT with 49 years of service, and Brad Stein with 30 years of active service. Were it not for their dedicated service as the backbone of this EMS agency, this service would most likely not have survived this long. These three individuals are extraordinarily important to the health and safety of their community and the citizens they have served, and we wish them, to recognize them with a special Community Impact Award. Surprise.
Hey, Wendy.
Thanks.
I just want to add that along with these gentlemen and other departments that responded on February 28th to a fall victim, I think you recall, Pastor Beth Jones had a very serious hiking accident and had fallen, and it was an incredible rescue where she was at, how you guys got in there and rescued her, along with the other departments that assisted. And thank God she's alive, and she's recovering well, and she had some serious, serious injuries. But again, you responded from your homes, it was, I think it was a Wednesday morning, Tuesday morning or Wednesday morning, and again, EMS just come rushing. I think they found her through her phone, ping in her phone. And she had a very serious hiking accident up in the hills. And personally, I want to thank you, and I know on behalf of her friends and family, we're so thankful.
Our final award today is actually the most prestigious award that our Regional EMS Council gives out, the Klein, A. Dewire Memorial Lifetime Achievement Award. It's given in memory of an extraordinary EMS leader from Lecomming County who was not only influential in our local region but across the state. This award is presented to a current EMS provider in our region who has 10-plus years of service and throughout their lifetime has exhibited an ongoing and extraordinary dedication to his or her community, and whose significant contribution to EMS and the community personifying the selfless giving, compassion, and commitment that's Klein's legacy. This year's award is being presented to Joseph P. Hopple. Joe embodies all of the qualities and qualifications for this award. He's been involved in emergency services for over 40 years, beginning as an EMT in the early 1980s, then attending the Williamsport Hospital Paramedic Training Institute. He spent many years locally as a paramedic, paramedic specialist, paramedic instructor, and platoon chief, along with being a volunteer firefighter, fire officer, EMT instructor, and fire instructor. His faithful commitment has positively impacted the success and growth of EMS and all of emergency services that include many of our area volunteering career services in Lecomming County, the region, and the Commonwealth. He has served as a career paramedic, manager, EMS educator, and volunteer firefighter and leader. Joe serves on the state's, has served on the state's Rescue Task Force, and was instrumental in assisting the late Klein Dewire in formation of our Regional Task Force 80. Joe has demonstrated a lifetime of dedication and commitment to EMS and the fire service. At the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, he developed, implemented, and oversaw very progressive procedures at Station 14 to protect the volunteer members, members of our career partners from Susquehanna Regional EMS and the Williamsport Bureau of Fire. He then shared these procedures with other volunteer fire companies. Since beginning his position as Director of Emergency Services for Old Lecomming Township, he's developed recruitment initiatives that have resulted in the addition of 20 new members and the reduction of response times and the number of overall responses. I'm certain-
hiking accident and had fallen, and it was an incredible rescue where she was at, how you guys got in there and rescued her, along with the other departments that assisted. And thank God she's alive, and she's recovering well, and she had some serious, serious injuries. But again, you responded from your homes, it was, I think it was a Wednesday morning, Tuesday morning or Wednesday morning, and again, EMS just come rushing. I think they found her through her phone, ping in her phone, and she had a very serious hiking accident up in the hills. And personally, I want to thank you, and I know on behalf of her friends and family, we're so thankful.
Our final award today is actually the most prestigious award that our Regional EMS Council gives out, the Klein, A. Dwyer Memorial Lifetime Achievement Award. It's given in memory of an extraordinary EMS leader from Lake Homing County who was not only influential in our local region but across the state. This award is presented to a current EMS provider in our region who has 10-plus years of service and throughout their lifetime has exhibited an ongoing and extraordinary dedication to his or her community and whose significant contribution to EMS and the community personifying the selfless giving, compassion, and commitment that's Klein's legacy. This year's award is being presented to Joseph P. Hopple. Joe embodies all of the qualities and qualifications for this award. He's been involved in emergency services for over 40 years, beginning as an EMT in the early 1980s, then attending the Williamsport Hospital Paramedic Training Institute. He spent many years locally as a paramedic, paramedic specialist, paramedic instructor, and platoon chief, along with being a volunteer firefighter, fire officer, EMT instructor, and fire instructor. His faithful commitment has positively impacted the success and growth of EMS and all of emergency services that include many of our area volunteering career services in Lake Homing County, the region, and the Commonwealth. He has served as a career paramedic, manager, EMS educator, and volunteer firefighter and leader. Joe serves on the state's, has served on the state's rescue task force and was instrumental in assisting the late Klein Dwyer in formation of our regional Task Force 80. Joe has demonstrated a lifetime of dedication and commitment to EMS and the fire service. At the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, he developed, implemented, and oversaw very progressive procedures at Station 14 to protect the volunteer members, members of our career partners from Susquehanna Regional EMS and the Williamsport Bureau of Fire. He then shared these procedures with other volunteer fire companies. Since beginning his position as Director of Emergency Services for Old Lake Homing Township, he's developed recruitment initiatives that have resulted in the addition of 20 new members and the reduction of response times and the number of overall responses. I'm certain that his good friend Klein would agree and be very pleased to know that Joe was receiving this recognition for his work. His contribution is thorough, actively providing service to his community, educating others, advancing the delivery of service by planning and participating on committees, strategic thinking, and developing of new procedures and processes. Most importantly is the impact Joe has had on patients across the country and locally through his education, sharing of skills and talents with hundreds of EMS providers. It's a pleasure to present this year's Klein, A. Dwyer Memorial Lifetime Achievement Award to Joseph Hopple.
I'm fully prepared to say two words. He got me. In the 1990s, when I had the honor to be the President of the EMS Council, I also had the honor to have as my Chairman of the Awards Committee, Mr. Klein Dwyer. It seems that every time I nominated Klein for an award, he would block it. It seems that every time he would nominate Eve for an award, I would use my presidential powers and block it. So the only way that he could get this through was to die. Some people will go to strange lengths to accomplish what they want to accomplish. I don't want awards, as I just told you, but this one, I'm highly honored to have. It'll be 15 years this year since we lost my brother, and I drove that night all the way from Delaware. There's a line in the movie Top Gun after Goose is killed, but his widow tells Maverick that he'd have done it anyway, but he'd have hated it. That's me now. I continue, but I miss him every day. This award touches me more than you know, so thank you.
We love you, Joe.
By the way, they got me here to talk about it, aren't they, Grant? So...
And Joe, Joe, anyone that had the honor to know Klein, what a magnificent man. He is sorely missed, and I can't think of a better recipient than you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to go back...
One second. Is there anybody else from EMS that would like to say anything? I want to acknowledge Wendy also. Wendy's getting ready to retire. She's dedicated her heart and soul to the county, and we want to thank you for your service. You'll be sorely missed also. And again, thank you for your service every day. We appreciate everything that you do. And in this short half hour, it's an honor to, or it's a privilege to honor you. So thank you. Be safe, and we'll pray for your safety each day.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I want to note the strong partnership between Shrem's and our volunteers, and that having those reinforce each other is so important for both training and morale and everything. And you know, you notice that there are a couple of folks here who got awards who were with Shrem's, but I think it's important for us to try to bolster those, both of those parts of this EMS system. It's a strong part. I also would like to echo your comments to Wendy and say thank you, Wendy, for what you've done. But thank all of you, all of you who some of, everyone here who's an EMS volunteer, put your hand up, please. Thank you all.
Okay, you're welcome to stay. We're going to have a nonprofit speak this morning next, which is a library. You're welcome to stay, or you can go back to work, or thank you for being here. Now, for the ones in the public that aren't aware of this, last year, what we did was we had our different departments in the county would come to the podium and talk about what their department did for the county residents, and we have to speak about five minutes. So the courts may come, or the services may come, or RMS may have reported that day about what they provided for the residents of our county. This year, what we did was we invited our nonprofits to come and explain what they do for the residents of the county. We've been privileged to have a nonprofit each week. We've had some phenomenal nonprofits come to speak, and today, we have the library here with us. So we'll give them a minute here. We have some people exiting, and we have some people in the hallway, so we'll give Barb a chance to get in the room and come up to the podium. Okay, thank you for being here. And I believe you have represented some different libraries here also?
Me too.
Great, fantastic.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having us. There are representatives from each of our Lake Homing County Library System libraries today that are going to talk. I'm going to talk first about our return on investments. I'm going to lead the presentation with a brief overview, really talking about the dollars and cents of what we do for the community. We do not have the time to cover in depth all the ways in which we serve to make the best use of everyone's time. So I have a brief report that really demonstrates the return of the investment of $1.3 million in taxpayer dollars that are allocated for the public libraries throughout the county. And then we will ask Muncie, Montgomery, Jersey Shore, Hughesville, Conklin, and last, James V. Brown to talk a little bit about their needs. So just a little bit about Muncie, and I'm going to talk about the performance of each one. So the Muncie Public Library was founded in 1965, and it has an amazing partnership with the Muncie Borough that resides in the building that the borough owns. They serve a population of 7,191 citizens, which covers the Muncie Borough, Muncie Township, Muncie Creek Township, and out of the 7,191 citizens, 3,108 are card-holding active members. So that's 43% of the population are cardholders. Now, this is what is really, I think, astonishing. So you give us $1.3 million, and just in Muncie alone, in 2021, they loaned 24,925 items. So let's look at the items that they're borrowing. So an average cost of a book is about $20. An average cost of an audiobook is between $40 and $80, just so you can have that in perspective. But if we're just looking on the return on investment, say $20 as an average cost of those materials. At an average cost of like $20,000 to $25,000, Muncie Public Library is saving citizens in the community who choose to borrow instead of buy $623,125. That's a remarkable investment. So I just want to ask in someone who is not related to the libraries at all, okay? I want someone, just a volunteer, to say what your honest perspective is. How much do you think that the Muncie Public Library receives in state support with our state taxes? Someone that's not involved with the library. Just guess. Anybody want to take a guess? You look very brave in the front. Do you want to take a guess? Just, what do you think? In state support, you want to guess?
Zero.
No, it's something, it's something, yeah. But I mean, for our taxpayer dollars in the state, how much do you think that the state contributes annually to the Muncie Public Library for their operating funds?
Low, like $15,000.
Yeah. And why do you think it's, yeah, it's pretty low.
I'm playing the lottery today.
It's actually a little tiny bit higher than that.
$15,000.
Keep going. Want to take a guess? So what they receive is $26,711 in state aid for their public libraries, which is a really small amount for all of the citizens that they serve from the state. Now, their county allocation is $55,930. With that return on investment, just for borrowing alone, and this is not their early literacy programs, this is not connecting adults to lifelong learning, this is not all the times that they go into childcare centers and read to the kids, this is not going to the food bank and handing out free books to the children waiting in line for food, this is not going to homeless shelters and making sure that every single bed has a children's book, and whether they're a child or whether they're an adult, they have that book to read that they can take home and keep. So it's, I mean, to be able to qualify that and that measure in the community is just, it's just astounding, and it's not something we can do. But if we look at just the dollars and cents of what Muncie provides, you give her $55,930, and she puts $623,125 back into citizens' pockets that they can spend for their families that they don't have to buy from Amazon. So sorry, Jeff Bezos, but we're keeping our local money here. We want them to spend it in our local community. And that is just one library. So let me talk a little bit about Montgomery. 1911, you have been a sustainable library since 1911. That's remarkable. The population is 5,288, which comprise Clinton Township and Montgomery Borough. In 2021, they loaned 27,604 items, and at $25 apiece, that's $690,100 that's returned back to citizens who can borrow instead of buy. They have 1,850 active card-holding members, and guess how many people used the Montgomery Library in 2021 with a population of 5,200 that they serve? How many people do you think went through the library in 2021? Anybody want to guess? 2,000? That sounds like a reasonable number, absolutely. 11,159 visits. And how do we know that? Because we have door counters? So we know when people come in, and we cut it in half because people have to come in and come out, and then we know that we have staff that come in and come out, so we subtract the staff as well. So that is an accurate number of 11,000 people using our libraries, and that's just in Montgomery. Okay, so I have to say, Montgomery is so remarkable. They have an equivalent of 1.52, full-time equivalent staff. That's a pretty small staff, you know? A little over one full-time person, and yet, this remarkable individual, Nicole, and the support and leadership of their board, not only did she provide a return of investment of $690,000, but she did 93 in-person programs in 2021 that engaged 417 people. She also recorded 40 programs that could be viewed anytime online. So pretty remarkable. They also received $20,000 from the state in state aid. Jersey Shore, founded in 1950, so you've been sustainable since 1950, population of 5,691 makes up the Jersey Shore Borough and Porter Township. There are 4,210 registered cardholders. They have had, with a population of 5,619,795 visits. Is anybody astounded by these numbers? I think it's absolutely remarkable that our community libraries are being used by more than, more than any nonprofit in this organization outside of a hospital. Pretty remarkable. I think your funds are invested well. Their return on investment, they lend $37,309 items, and at $25 apiece, and we know they're not that, we know that they're much more than that, is $932,725 of return where our citizens can borrow instead of buy. And so they don't have to give that money out to their pockets, and they can feed their families, they can provide extension for their families, and they can spend that money in our local community. They receive $22,000 from the state, $941. For Hughesville, founded in 1941, a population of 5,902, which makes up Hughesville, Picture Rocks, and Wolf Township, received $15,121 visits. They loaned $30,316 items, which is a return on investment of $765,000. And their state aid's $22,000. Conklin, founded in 1943, has a population of 7,584, which makes up Fairfield Township and Montorsville Borough. They received $12,441 visits in our Conklin Library in 2021. Their return on investment is $631,450. Their state aid's 27. And last but not least, James V. Brown, which is the Headquarters Library, and the responsibility of the Headquarters Library is probably tenfold what the small-member libraries' responsibilities are, in the sense that we have a responsibility to serve the entire county. So whatever population, when the library started up, they did not cover in the county because they didn't receive municipal support, James V. Brown picked it up. And so we serve a population of 82,529 people, and we've had 58,237 visits in 2021. James V. Brown loaned 222,927 items last year, and at $25 apiece, that would be $5,573,175 as a return on investment. So we're seeing a trend here, right, with state support. State support to Brown is $458,640 as a local public library. But we also take on the responsibility to serve as a district library center in leadership over 11 counties, from Bradford, Potter, Tioga, all the way down to Snyder County. We've served to support the continuing education of those boards, of the directors. We go and visit them, we help them with policies, and we help strengthen them. And we... And we provide overdrive audiobooks and eBooks for all of those libraries, all, covering a population in Pennsylvania of 504,000 people. So for that, we receive some district aid of about $449,000 that is dedicated for those services. So your investment in 1.3 million translates back into the pockets of our citizens $9,215,975 that they can spend on their families and our local communities. And I think that's worth it. It's more than worth it. So we do have some needs. We have not received an increase last year, and we understand and we respect the fact that you have so many pressing needs. But there are shortfalls. And for, I'm going to speak for James V. Brown, and then the rest are going to speak for their libraries, and I promise we will be very brief. But for James V. Brown, what we want to do is be efficient as we can as a facility, and we have a 1907 facility. And we want to upgrade all of them with lighting, with LED lighting. That's going to cost over $100,000, and we've applied for the American Rescue Plan funds for that. So we put in our intent to apply for that. So I'm hoping so much that you will honor that request and honor the requests of our member libraries for that type of increase for very specific things that will help. Another thing is technology upgrades, because we are information professionals, and it is absolutely necessary for us to have the highest technology so that we can support our families. There are 65% of our total nation's population does not have internet access in their home because they can't afford the $100. So we provide that for them, free of cost, high-speed internet. And no matter who you are, you are welcome in our libraries. You know, it doesn't, you don't have to believe in anything particular. You don't have to be anyone. You don't have to have a residence. We serve everyone regardless, because that's just who we are, and that's what our values are. So thank you very much. I have this for you, so you can take a look at the numbers. I also have profiles of each of the library's statistics, so that you can take a look at that at your leisure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Larry Stout, and I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the Montgomery Area Public Library. And on behalf of the library, we're grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today, and I will be very brief. We're thankful for the support that the libraries you have given to us and other libraries in our county. However, as our prices and community needs continue to constantly increase, our small library asks for more monetary support. In Montgomery, we need to upgrade our technology for easier, faster public access. We also want to improve our facilities, as we have a 101-year-old building and all the facility management that goes with a historically old building. And lastly, our little library runs, as you've just heard, with one full-time, one part-time staff. And with developments that are happening in our immediate area, we're anticipating greater community needs, which means our services must grow, our physical collection must grow, and our staff must grow. So on behalf of Montgomery Area Public Library, we thank you for your consideration of this. Thank you.
My name is Corey Brennison. I'm the director of the Muncie Public Library. And again, I thank you for your support, and I'm happy to be here this morning. A couple of things I want to say. First is that I grew up in Muncie. I grew up in the Muncie Library, and I feel like it's a privilege and an honor to be back in this area after traveling the world and being a leader in the community. Because the days of libraries being stuffy, quiet, shushing places is over. Libraries are vibrant, they're colorful, they're engaging, they're innovative spaces for communities to come together and to share, not just share information, but share experiences. And so libraries today need to be super flexible. We need to be able to be accessible by all residents in our community. And so what the Muncie Library is seeking, we have been engaged in a capital improvement campaign to grant larger access to all of our resources, not just our collection, but to our computers, to our bathroom facilities, just even getting through the back door. So we have been removing architectural barriers that will make our space more ADA compliant. Now, the funds that we have for that are not enough to complete the entire project. And so we are asking for additional support in making our space really dynamic, really flexible, so that we can grow and change as our community grows and changes. Thank you.
I'm Charlene Brungard. I am the director of the Jersey Shore Public Library. As libraries, we work diligently to make sure that we have the best collections of printed, digital, and electronic resources that we can get to serve our communities. Many libraries, such as ours, are housed in buildings that were not specifically built to be libraries. Some of us are in former churches, some of us are in former banks. If you have not visited our library, I would encourage you to do so, as we have maintained the beautiful stained glass windows that were part of the United Methodist Church that was there. One of the things that is especially hard for libraries to do is to maintain our physical buildings and grounds to ensure the safety of our staff, customers, and materials. Just last year, our library spent $43,000 replacing the roof. That project ate up the majority of our capital investment funds, a large chunk of endowment funds, and required a lot of gifts from private individuals. Our request for funding from the American Rescue Act is focused on the safety and longevity of our facilities, because our general budgets do not have enough leeway to set money aside for these types of needs. We need to upgrade the lighting system in our library to add more LED lighting fixtures. We need to replace our entire fire security and smoke detector systems. Our current system is over 21 years old. It requires onsite alarm system testing and monitoring, and has extensive maintenance costs annually. And we need an NDAA-compliant security system installed to help alleviate loss of materials, destruction of library property, and the safety and welfare of our patrons. I'm asking you to please take time to thoroughly consider the requests of each of our county system libraries today, and I hope that you will see the value that these requests will bring to our communities. We thank you for your support, and I thank you for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Kathy Butler, and I'm the director of the Hughesville Area Public Library. And it's my job to make sure that I provide programs, information, materials, and services to the community that they need. That's first and foremost in my mind every single day. With that said, we have a newer building, but it's still 20 years ago, it was built in 2005, so we're going, getting a little older, and there are definitely things we need, as we found through COVID. I need flexible shelving. I have summer reading programs planned, and I've had to cap the numbers because I want people to be comfortable, and I want the ventilation to be correct and all of that. So I have four programs that are full already, and it's not even June. So that's, I fear success. I fear sustaining success. My preschool programs, I love, you know, and I love doing STEM and weaving things in with the kids, and it's my goal that these skills and stuff I'm teaching now will transfer later on in life. So we're asking for mobile hotspots, because the people that needed mobile hotspots during COVID are not the ones that can afford it. We're asking for flexible shelving, we're asking for more staffing, because I can do amazing programs, but I need the staff to do it. And that's pretty much it. I thank you for your time.
Commissioners Metzger, Mirabeau, and Ms. Air, thank you for today. I'm Dennis Correll, Volunteer Board President for the WB Conco Memorial Library in Montoursville. Thank you for allowing us to come and represent the library system here in Lecombe County. We are here to advocate for the American Rescue Plan funds, of course, that application that was recently submitted by Barb McGary. As you know, we're in the final stages of our campaign to refresh Conco Library, and you were kind and generous, assisting us last year with some 2021 county funds available for this activity, and we appreciate your commitment to our efforts and the support of the residents of Montoursville. We're in the final stages with our architect, Anthony Visco, and he continues to update us about the rising cost due to our current worldwide economic upheaval. He continues to talk about preparing for increases and has let us know our current goal may not be enough to complete our project. Hopefully, in the next six weeks, we'll get a better sense of that, as some documents have gone out to contractors, all local, to determine where we're going to end up being with this project. That leaves us, as a volunteer board, to continue to seek funding for portions of the project. This is where you come into play. In the submission by Ms. McGary, we have specific items that we're asking for due to the pandemic that has made us look at our project in a whole new light, and that includes adding air quality equipment, increased lighting efficiency, and increased separation and special construction for the tutoring areas, so people can be stationed appropriately apart. I could spend an hour telling you, as I've said in the past, what we do at Conco, with all the programming for children, access to materials, computer availability, and that's just to name a few of the things that you support in Montoursville. Last November, I stood in front of you to share just how Conco Library uses the annual funds allocated to us, demonstrating that we exponentially take those dollars, and we're able, for every dollar you give us, we can turn that into $13 back to the community. And you've heard all those numbers from Barb earlier. I can assure you that the funds allocated through the American Rescue Plan will have a major impact on what we do for the citizens of Lecombe County. The library is a driving force to all patrons, currently residents of Montoursville, and those that are moving into the area. The library is one of the first places that they go. So I can dazzle you with lots of numbers, but I won't do that today. But I want you to know that you are making a difference with the dollars that you're giving us, for the Lecombe County residents, and I and all the others appreciate that. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Dennis.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm John Confer, president of the Board of Trustees at the Brown Library. I want to thank you for the support that you've given to our county libraries over the years, and that continued support. What's going on at the library currently? We're getting ready for summer readings. We would love if all the commissioners would want to participate in summer reading this year. There's awards. We'd love to give out prizes to you. In addition to that, we've got two of our new bookmobiles are ordered, one that will be geared toward children, and one that will be geared towards adults, mostly senior citizens. So it's going to be able to enhance the way that we interact with children and adults, and we'll be able to enhance and do more than what we've been able to do in the past. From all that you've heard from Barbara and the other libraries, I hope that you will take this all into consideration and be able to further contribute to these libraries that really support all of our communities in a very strong way and meet the needs of a lot of citizens in the community that otherwise wouldn't be met. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You know, one of the interesting things that you mentioned is the LED lighting, and with the 30% increase from PP&amp;L and the 9% to 10% increase that's coming from UGI, in terms of, I think almost all of these libraries are run on gas. Anybody using oil? So it is going to be a difficult situation on operating budgets, and that makes it harder to set aside funds for capital projects.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate the library being here. Again, another one of our nonprofits in the area that services the people, and we thank you for being here and explaining what you do. And in all our nonprofits, they're struggling. We've heard from several.
Seven or eight so far.
And they're on shoestring budgets and trying to make it to assist the community, so.
And we will take up the summer reading challenge. Where's John?
Glad to hear it. Commissioner Mirabeau will read Dr. Seuss.
More in peace, will be.
Readings in hand. Thank you. I believe next week we have the rescue workers coming.
Thank you all for coming out today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports. 3.1. Rayanna.
Good morning.
Commissioners, being you know, Rayanna, it's her first time going through the cash requirement report, so.
Morning, Ray. Thanks for being here.
Good morning, commissioners. I present to you the cash requirements report due through May 28, 2022, that were paid on May 19 in the amount of $1,092,337.26.
Is there any questions on the counts, people?
Yeah, I have 37 questions.
And I have about 40 questions.
No, you did a good job. We appreciate it. There was only one. I should have. Had something.
Yeah, we all are.
I think the mic, is the mic on?
Yes, could everybody speak up to the mics a little?
Yep, absolutely. I think.
Thank you.
It was on page 15, under resource management. Would have been Mobile dredging.
And is Mr. Yorks on the line?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, he's there.
Oh, he is?
Maybe he can answer that.
Mobile dredging is the company that we use to do the.
Matt, speaking to the mic, please.
Mobile dredging is the company we use to video and clean out all the plumbing underneath the.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That was it. Got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that motion. Aye. Aye, stay carried. Thank you, Ray.
And seriously, Ray, and thank you for all that you folks are doing up there. You're working short-staffed, and we appreciate your commitment of everyone up there. Please convey that to them.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to 3.2. Maya?
Yeah.
Good morning, Maya.
Good morning. Before you, is the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of April, and if you see the report.
Yes. Is there any questions on the contracts?
For the public's information, the Director of Administration at the end of the table here is permitted to sign a contract under $10,000. And sometimes we have contracts that come through that need to be done, typically legal services, pest control, there's an appraisal. These are all items that the commissioners have approved at one time or another, but he is signing the contract to keep the process moving.
Got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. On their side? Aye. Aye, stay carried.
All right, 4.1. Jason, you go, item.
Yes, Director. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioners, RMS will be going out for the wetting bid, the Leachate hauling services. We're going to have the bids be due June 10 with an open date of June 16. Of course, just a few weeks ago, we had to request emergency declaration for Leachate trucking. As you know, we've had a wet spring, and we must keep our Leachate lagoons on town for 25%. bid and then maintain a list of haulers who can provide trucking.
Okay, and this is in your budgeted for this year?
Yes, we do have a line item, but the issue being, Commissioners, you never know how much, how little. There's years we don't use it, there's years we have to.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
We'll reassess the Commissioners' public meeting this time for the Board of Assessments, and convene the Board of Assessments at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For 5.2, approve the following real estate refund for Ashley Marks in the amount of The reason being is the mapping for this parcel and another parcel in Porter Township had information on wrong parcels, and the owner had called us, and we had corrected the information, and they are due the refund of $715.12.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Is there any further questions or comments on this?
No.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Assessments meeting. Start over again. Adjourn the Board of Assessments, and we'll reconvene the Commissioners' public meeting this time.
6.1, Brooke, tax claim.
This is, I'm requesting approval for the following delinquent Rose State tax interim that was turned into delinquency due to, it was mailed out to the previous address, and the owner never received this 2021 county interim. He requested he be refunded back the penalty interest and fees of $149.83.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
You're recommending this, Brooke?
Yes, I'm recommending it, yes.
Okay. And you're recommending it for the reason that it was not his fault, or is that what the?
It was never, he had his previous address, and he got the school interim, but he never got the county one because it was sent to the old address and not forwarded on to him by the post office.
Okay.
So he didn't realize he had another bill out there until it was turned into the delinquency.
So he has a letter attached to the request. Explain everything.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions for Brooke? Hearing none, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Brooke. Have a good day.
You too.
All right, moving on to action items. Only five of them. Mike Wiley, are you on the line?
No, he's not.
You got it.
I got it.
Two, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
State your name.
Shannon Ross, Planning Director for Lecomming County. Mike has been working with Scott Williams, the Montgomery Borough Water Authority Solicitor, and Sean Downey, their engineer, to put together the deed of dedication for the Montgomery Water Authority's, the line that goes to the Timber Run Industrial Park, the water tank, and the other portions of the facilities that are being constructed and/or turned over to Montgomery Water Authority. Mike is asking that we, that the Commissioners authorize pending some minor changes that they still need to work out. They have those in place now. They're putting the language together. They are just legal language issues. They're not changing any of the services. And the reason why we're asking you to do this pending is because we need to do this so that the DEP will come in and will do the inspection so that, because they can't supply water to Digger until the inspection is completed for potable water supply.
I'm okay with that. I know that all the substantive issue's been worked out.
Everything's been, yes.
We're talking about some minor legal. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further questions for Shannon? Hearing none? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for your information, it seems like everything else is going well. Looks like UGI and all the gas issues are going well, and the access seems to be going well now, too.
And that's a good, you know, this Mr. Digger, we'll call him Mr. Digger, came from Indiana, and it's good to know that in Lecomming County, you can move things and get them done quickly if you decide to invest millions of dollars and create 150 jobs.
As quickly as we can.
Right.
I'm not sure it was really quick, but it was quicker than some other thing. And I know that, just for your information, I know that they aren't currently interviewing for their positions, so.
Yes.
They have a lot of good positions open.
Yeah. Good jobs.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Maya?
Hello. The first item I have for you is vote to approve the Municipal Assistance Grant Agreement. This is an amount of $50,000, and this is for the subdivision and redevelopment ordinance to hire consultants. We'll update all of those.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Maya, could you speak a little bit louder for the audience?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. The next item I have for you is vote to approve change order number four. It's with RLS Construction for the construction of the Health and Wellness Center. What they're doing is going to be doing some duck work, so instead of using some flex ducks, they're going to be using sheet metal alternative. I'm still waiting on a place for them, but I wanted to get on the agenda because it's imperative, given the turnaround time in order to keep the project on time.
Maya, do you know what the reason for using the sheet metal versus the flexible duck?
Well, it was originally requested the flex duck, but that is something that Ken did not want to do.
Condensation.
So, to the reasons for that, I don't know. That was worked out between Ken and the contractors.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
You know, just.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, Commissioner, it probably has to do with some fire safety issues.
It was a combination of condensation and potential velocity flow issues because they're using the flexible.
Boosters. Yeah, okay.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
One other question I wanted to ask you, since I'm done with mine. I wanted to see if it's possible if I could add, something just came up literally this morning where we were doing some, we have some cabling we have to do with Leachie Electric as a change order, and again, it's time sensitive, but I didn't know how, from a legal perspective, the booster would like to handle that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to add an item to the agenda, which would be change order request number one from Leachie Electric, installation of data telephone cabling at the Third Street Plaza. It's a motion to move to change the agenda.
Yep.
Does she second?
I'll second.
Okay, all fair side?
Aye. One moment. Is this because?
I think you have to reopen this item for public comment, if there is any, since it's just only added to the agenda.
Right, that's one, but is this going to hold up their work if we don't approve it today?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a timing issue with getting the supplies and everything that they need in.
And my motion is simply to change the agenda. It's not a substantive motion on this item.
Right.
It was just a motion to change the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, so we have presentation for you, request number one. So the problem is that some of this stuff has to keep moving if the other contractors are going to be able to do their job.
Correct.
So for the public, it's a change order in the amount of $52,412 that'll provide labor, material, and equipment for an installing of data cabling. There's certain CAT 6A cabling that has to be done, which is basically for internet and telephone and other services.
And this is to keep the schedule moving on the wellness centers, so contractors aren't held out.
Right.
Okay.
And the labor rates, if you flip it over, are, you know, within range.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve change order number one.
Is there a second?
And if you can bring back on this, Commissioners, will you just confirm?
Yes.
There is public comment on this item.
I'm just waiting for a second, Solicitor, and once we get to the second, then I'll put it on the floor for the public.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Is there any comments from the public? Can I hear you none?
None online.
None online? Okay, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye? So carried. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, 7.4, Ken George.
Solicitor, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have an amendment to the contract for Monitronics. It's a settlement build. We had to make some minor changes for the security system.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah, last action item, 7.5, Leslie.
Good morning, Leslie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Matt. First, I just want to, you guys talked about all the EMS and the 911 and everything this morning, and I just personally have to thank them. I had to use 911, not recently, but in the past with my father and diabetic emergency stuff, and 911 was spot on every time. And I was simply surprised that when I called them the next day to thank everybody for everything they did, I'm like, I'm sure you get this call all the time. They said they never, ever get that call. They never get that call to thank them. I just, I couldn't believe that, so, for whatever that's worth, but yeah.
Well, that's a good point.
Definitely appreciate that.
The public should thank the public, not take it for granted.
Yeah. So, anyway, so I'm just asking, yeah. I'm just asking approval this morning. This is an amendment for our Windstream contract that we signed the end of December. Basically, there's no cost change. We're just moving our services from the courthouse over to TSP, and we're going the phone system and everything over to a different building, so we're just changing addresses.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, comment?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I go around to the polling places during elections and try to find out what's going on, and one of the complaints that we have been receiving lately is, I changed my registration, and now they won't let me vote. And one of the biggest issues that we have as far as that change of registration is PENDONS issue, that if they don't put it in, it goes to a default, and you are considered a non-affiliate. You're not affiliated. This is a major problem, and this is one that needs corrected. I will tell the public, if you want to change anything, online is pretty close to being okay, but in person, you can't beat that. So your vote does matter, and you need to make sure you can do whatever you can do that it does count. It's frustrating to somebody to come there and say, well, I changed my registration, and they don't have it, and so they cannot vote the way they wanted to vote. It happens regularly, and we need to correct that.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Commissioner, can I pull a comment? Pull a comment?
On that issue or universally?
Whatever, if you want to speak on anything, yeah. Pull a comment.
I just wondered if that would like you.
Yeah.
Yeah, 22 sec, no. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made light of that. We brought that up for, never mind.
Take it home, make your eggs.
Thanks, Commissioners. I want to kind of sum up the reason everybody showed up today, and then I'll hand over to Karen for specifics. I don't think it's any secret that there have been a lot of issues and irregularities, a lot of mayhem involved with the election process. Commissioner Missara spoke to one here as it is. I also understand that people who are opposed to auditing any part of the 2020 election are pretty vigilant in attacking those who ask to do so. And I want to make clear that this is a group of your constituency, and we want to be able to give you what you need to be able to move forward with your duties, knowing that you have support, and that's why we're here. We're here to open a constructive dialogue, not destructive, not be divisive, understanding that along the way, there may be misunderstandings and mishaps, but we are not here to put you, our elected officials, our elected voice, on the spot. We trust you because we elected you. First thing I want to ask is that as we go down this road, we're going to make some requests. We ask that we not be pushed off to the unelected bureaucrats, and I'm going to give you an example as to why. When we started the process of canvassing this county with irregularities that we identified, volunteers going door to door on a mission to ask people if they could understand why this anomaly showed up, it was a good and honest attempt. There was a statement that came out of Voter Services, an unfounded statement publicly announced against our efforts, saying that we were identifying ourselves as individuals from Voter Services, and it was a scam. Those are unfounded accusations. Not fair. I'm crying foul. I want to make it clear, you are representatives, our elected officials did not make that statement on an elected bureaucrat, and I don't mean an elected bureaucrat as a negative term. It's just a fact. You are our voice, so I want to get that off the table, and I want to let you know that that negatively affected the ability of political candidates as well to go out and get their petition signed to get on the ballot. So that statement hurt the election process, not only our process in getting signatures for this petition that we're going to present and to try to get to the bottom of irregularities, but it also affected candidates that wanted to get on the ballot. So I consider that a problem, and for that reason, I would ask that in going forward, I believe the trust has been broken between our individuals and the person who's been hired to run election services. I'm sorry, it's just the way it is. We would rather, if we need to submit information, we would rather submit it to you, our elected voices. So I want to get that out on the table to start with. Now, I want to also talk about statistical anomalies, because there's a lot of accusation out there that our efforts are coming from the hip, and there's no foundation, there's no evidence. Well, you can't produce evidence until you can access it, but what we do have is a very time-tested and true process of getting to the bottom of irregularities or suspicion of irregularities, and that is identifying statistical anomalies. And I invite you guys on Saturday to come to a meeting with an individual, a military-grade analyst, who identified statistical anomalies in Lecomming County. Get it right from a horse's mouth. So we have statistical anomalies as a result. Everybody's concerned with the election is to go to the next step, so that's what we're doing. We're proceeding to identify these anomalies and try to get to the point where we can audit what information has created that statistical anomaly and get to the bottom of it. And this isn't, we're not saying that Lecomming County did anything wrong, or that our leadership did, or our elected officials. What we're saying is just give us the opportunity to make Lecomming County shine. Our hope is that we get to the bottom of this, and Lecomming County can be projected as a winner in this thing. We do not want to violate the sanctity of the vote, the voter box, or the anonymity, the anonymous nature of the voter. That's not what we're after here, but we would like a very thorough investigation into the points that we're going to bring up, and what we would like to do... the points that we're going to bring up, and what we would like to do today is request that we could submit to you our, our petition that's been passed, because this gives you the ability to hear that there are your constituents, and our numbers are climbing. You're going to get a thousand signatures plus today, and the petitions continue, continuing to be passed. So what we would, we would ask is that the Commissioners would, going forward, schedule a meeting in the format that you think is best, whether it's the Election Board or whether it's the Commissioners, it's fine with us. The main thing is that you, our elected voices, are present at that meeting. We don't want to be pushed on to bureaucracy. We also ask that you would respect this in a timely manner, because things are moving. We've done a lot of work. People are very anxious to, to get to the point here, and we feel that we've, we're going to be able to present enough to you. It's been a lot of hard work done, and, and really, really, really dedicated people, and it's not been an easy, it's not been an easy path for them. We'd ask that you do respect that these people are doing this on their own time. I think I'm going to wrap here unless I've missed anything, but again, we really appreciate the fact that you are willing to hear us and not make a confrontational or any type of problem here. We're here to make you guys look good, but I don't think it's fair at this point that Lake Como County can be touted as doing it right if we don't know. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just make one comment? The press release that went out was reviewed by the Commissioners, and it was not done suispanly by the, I believe we, against any person. It was simply saying that if someone comes to your door and represents that they're from Voter Services, that Voter Services doesn't do that. They don't do home delivery. That's all it was. It was not directed to your group, so I just want you to understand that, because I don't want you to think that we were personally attacking your group.